We should meet. I have questions.
Okay. I'll call the meeting to order. Please join me for the pledge of allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Roll call. Mayor/Clark?
Here.
Councilor President Robinson?
Here.
Counselor Henderson?
Here.
Counselor King?
Here.
Counselor Harris?
Here.
Counselor Kuiper?
Here.
Thank you. So our first presentation is my State of the City address. And if it's all right with everyone, I'm going to go to there so that we can get a camera angle for our citizens that are watching tonight. I also thought it might be kind of nice to be able to stand while I gave the address. You always feel a little strange up on the dais, and the councilors will attest to that. And I always like to be down, talking to everyone. It's a pleasure to be here tonight to give our first State of the City address. It's a wonderful opportunity. The other cities in our municipalities do give this address. And so I think it's a wonderful opportunity to say, hey, let's shout out Sherwood. So that's what I'm going to do tonight. If there's one thing I love doing more than anything else, it's shouting out Sherwood. Sherwood is and continues to be one of the most livable cities in the state of Oregon, and has even been recognized nationally in Family Circle Magazine and in Money Magazine. Sherwood's unique mixture of growing, emerging community with a small-town feel draws new residents to us every year and keeps the current residents interested and invested in this community. We have top-ranking schools and beautiful parks. We have strong youth sports programs and faith communities. We can boast two of our own recreational centers, the Sherwood Fieldhouse and the Sherwood Recreational Facility, as operated by the YMCA. We recently updated our senior center, which is also another multi-use facility, regularly used by scout troops, Voices for the Performing Arts, and choirs, and many other nonprofit partners. We have a beautiful outdoor amphitheater at Stell Olsen Park, now with modern facilities, reed restrooms, which I know is appreciated by all. If you haven't dropped by Stell Olsen Park recently, then you are in for a pleasant surprise, because the new play structure is being erected as we speak, and will be complete for our children to enjoy before the start of our Music in the Park program, another excellent Sherwood tradition. It's part of our long-range maintenance plan on all parks that was brought forward last year by our council. I think that that is a tribute to us looking forward. That's what I want to do. I want to think about what are the things that we need to look forward to in the future in order to plan. If you've driven through downtown recently, you've noticed the beautiful building being built across from our Cannery Plaza with much anticipation. It is our new art center, which we hope to be naming this evening. It'll have its grand opening on February 28th from 11:00 a.m. to 4:00 p.m. This facility was created as a multi-use facility and has individual seats in rows that actually fold back in a bleacher style, opening up a grand ballroom that can accommodate round-table banquet seating. If you've ever been to the Broadway rows, it's a little bit what it looks like. These are real theater seats, not bleacher seats like you'd sit at at the Sherwood High School gym, but they're real bleacher seats that fold back, opening up a beautiful area that you can have lovely banquets at. It has two classrooms, one wet and one dry. On the far side of the building are three generous building spaces, which will be available as a lease as a revenue source for the center. Art centers generally are loss leaders. So we thought ahead and said, how do we maybe make this facility not a loss leader? Let's add 3,000 square feet that we can rent out regularly and also bring people to enjoy regularly. When I think about Sherwood, the one thing that stands out for me more than anything is how much in this town people care about one another. Many of the amenities that we think of as making Sherwood Sherwood were started by people just like you and I. The Helping Hands Food Bank was started by Gerald and Dot Eady in a closet in our little Sherwood United Methodist Church many years ago, because they saw a need for providing food to our most vulnerable. Cindy and Roger Axon came along and started the Give 'n Gobble Thanksgiving Run to help fund that Helping Hands. A couple of years ago, Mike and Shelley Rath took that run over, and Give 'n Gobble every year has continued to grow. I've had the joy of running it every year. And this year, my children also ran with me. That was very special for me. The food closet has turned into a center that now gives back to the Oregon Food Bank and has expanded to offer a weekday backpack, I'm sorry, weekend backpack program, food for students on the assisted-living program, assisting lunch program, that have opportunity to take the backpack filled with food home for the weekend, a time when there's often not food in the pantry. I think one of the most innovative parts of this program is that it not only provides assistance to those in need, but it also builds community. How are the backpacks that I speak about filled? Well, they're filled as one of the activities at the Springs Retirement Center. It's one of their most coveted activities that you better sign up in advance for, because it is full if you don't. And those backpacks are lovingly filled by the seniors in those communities, knowing that they're going to go to needy children and home so that they have lunches and food to eat over the weekend. This is the Sherwood I have come to know and love. Seniors caring for children, and children caring for seniors. A similar program that I've been involved with for several years is the Faith in Action: Good Faith Samaritan. This program facilitated by Providence occurs twice a year and gives seniors who want to remain in their homes but need some assistance with that annual and biannual yard maintenance to sign up for that volunteer yard maintenance and window cleaning service, done once in the spring for the weeds and once in the fall for the leaves. This program is one not to be missed. Check the Senior Center Bulletin Board for announcements of this great program and get involved. I used to go, when my kids were very little, to do this program, and sometimes they were so small that they really weren't so much of a help. But they would play with the dog, and we would trim the trees, and they learned that it's important to think about more than just yourself in a community. We're all in this together. Two great environmental programs have also been thriving in our community in the last year. The One Tree for All Program, sponsored by our Clean Water Services, and the Trash Palooza, started by another great Sherwood citizen, Naomi Bellup. The One Tree for All Program has done several plantings in and around Sherwood, and last year I participated in what was Phase Two of a Woodhaven Park Program. It was the second time that they had come around and done a planting, and you could already see the thriving, lush, natural vegetation that was really making a big impact on the effects of the rainwater. Last year, Counselor Harris and I joined our children in many residents and swept the city, eradicating the trash from walkways and ditches, having all-around great time at the Trash Palooza. Beautification of our town is not only on the minds and hearts of our citizens, it's also on our city agenda. Last year, we continued our sidewalk repair program, where citizens could take advantage of opting into a reduced-fee city repair of raised sidewalks, and the cost could be added incrementally over a year to the residents' utility bill. This program has been extremely successful by keeping our residential walkways safe for all to enjoy and minimizing the impact on the homeowners. We've also improved several applications for facade grants. In our downtown business revitalization, you can actually take a look at our most recent grant recipient as they complete their exterior upgrade, the Smockville Montessori School, located just one block from the City Hall, and see what a difference this revitalization program has made for our city. That's where we've been. Now, where are we going? I'm so proud to be standing here in front of you today, and just behind me are three of your newly-elected city councilors, Jennifer Kuiper, Jennifer Harris, and our new council president, Sally Robinson. They've been a breath of fresh air and an infusion of new positive energy, and I look forward to working with them in the years to come, as well as with our already seated councillor. I'd like to give you a glimpse of what's on my agenda as your new mayor, starting with my top priorities. We're going to talk about stuff. Yep, that's what I said. We're going to talk about stuff. There's no taboo subjects, there are no hands-off issues, and there are no such things as attacking a department or partner. As your elected leader, I feel it is my responsibility to bring forward the hard questions, to solve problems. That's good leadership. That's effective government. One of Mayor Middleton's goals was the completion of a dog park for our citizens of Sherwood. I'll be advocating to complete this goal. Now, I don't happen to own a dog, but after going door-to-door during the election process, I have to tell you, I am in the minority. In future meeting, I will be bringing forward to council a supplemental budget approval to achieve the goal of bringing a dog park to the city of Sherwood. I would appreciate your support. Mayor Middleton also started discussion about how we provide our police service to the citizens of Sherwood. I will be continuing that discussion. I would like to do a cost-surface analysis of contracting our police services with Washington County. Now, this is not equivalent to closing the Sherwood Police Department. Our police officers deserve to have the most opportunity for advancement possible without having to leave our department. In many Washington and Clackamas County cities, communities have found financial and service benefits by contracting with the county police department. Will this be our final decision? I don't know. I would simply like to investigate the possibilities with no preconceived goal for the conclusion in mind. We all want to live in a place where we walk outside to our car after dark without a second thought, where our children can safely play in schools and at their parks, where our senior populations feel valued and appreciated, whose knowledge and experience and wisdom is called upon. Where we actually, we were actually referenced on a national TV program, Good Wife, by one of the characters who said, "Nothing ever happens in Sherwood." I, for one, would like to keep it that way, by supporting and providing the best police services possible at the lowest cost. To that end, this month, I will be bringing forward to council, under Consent Agenda, the formation of a new board, the Sherwood Police Advisory Board. As more citizens get involved in the planning and support of our city's employees, the stronger we are as a community. Another goal on my agenda is bringing city-sponsored community gardens to the city of Sherwood. Last week, I attended a Smart Growth Conference, and one of the discussion topics was community gardens and how they can be instrumental in bringing generations together to work and learn about healthy foods and local agriculture. We have several independently-owned and operated community gardens that are at capacity each and every year in the city of Sherwood. I've already had a generous offer from our R Table Organic Garden Owners located on Morgan Road to assist in our production and education programming. My last agenda item is the completion of a recycle program in all of our parks and city facilities. As a fourth-generation Oregonian, I literally cannot throw my Pepsi can into the trash bin once it is done, when I am standing in a park, and could be found many, many times rinsing it out and placing it inside of the diaper bag to bring home. We are overdue for being good stewards for our great town with a recycle program. I'm incredibly proud of our planning staff that has developed, organized, publicized, and created a Citizen Owner Committee for our pre-concept plan for Sherwood West. Yes, you heard me right, pre-concept plan. We received a record number of applicants for this committee, and it's ready to get to work. We are excited to see more new involvement. Sherwood is going to grow, and I would like to see us attract new industry that is clean, high-tech, professional, high-paying jobs, and employ citizens that can actually live and work in the city of Sherwood. The only way to do that is to start planning now. Under my administration, I am committed to encouraging new members, new voices into all of our boards and commissions. I will continue to be involved in the conversation and in relationship with our Washington County and state representatives that make the decisions impacting our major roads and highways. We have a very unique positioning where we are bisected by two roads we have no jurisdiction over. Highway 99 is controlled by ODOT, twelfth in Sherwood, Washington County. It's important that we remain at the table in both of these areas, so that our voices are heard in what happens in the large, major roadways that bisect our lovely city. Maintaining open dialogue regarding the decisions made at county and state level directly impact our city's livability. I will continue to be a part of that discussion and the discussion of water planning for our region, and keep the important partnerships we have built with the city of Wilsonville open and transparent as we plan for our future. I'll be moving into my office into the ground floor of City Hall this month in order to be more accessible to you. And I'm not going to take it personally that it is a windowless office. I want to be accessible to you, the citizens of Sherwood, and I have to tell you, I am so proud to work for you, and I am so proud with this council to move Sherwood positively forward. Thank you. So we are moving on to Consent Agenda? Oh, I'm sorry, Approval of Agenda. Do I have a motion to approve Agenda?
Oh, I motion to approve the Agenda. My second.
All in favor?
Aye.
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 Opposed? Motion carries? And we'll move to Consent Agenda? Do I have a motion to approve Consent?
I move to approve Consent Agenda. My second.
All in favor? Aye.
Aye.
Opposed? None? Motion carries? And we move to Citizen Comments. Looks like I have a couple here. Our clause.
Mr. Claus, I don't think your mic's on.
Yeah, thank you.
That better? All right. I fought for the YMCA in Billings, Montana. As you know, it's YMCA. I thought it was Young Man's Crow Association when I went there, coming off the reservation, and then I found out it wasn't. So when I won the state championship, I put crow over Christian. My mother was very upset. But I'll tell you one thing about the YMCA: As long as you were winning, you got a free membership. The day I won the first tournament, you know something? I could use the Y up until then. They wouldn't even let me shower in it. So I don't have a lot of love for the Y. Now, I started to tell you that because right after Metro Media came down versus San Diego, and the Supreme Court made as many nice comments as they did about my sign code, I started getting jobs. And I went to Mesa, Arizona, and everybody said they wanted me to talk about their code. And Howard Godfrey started it with, he was the head man there, "This is not Phoenix," and then he flipped his sign, and he said, "It's not Tempe," and then he flipped the sign, and he said, "For God's sakes, it's not Scottsdale. This is Mesa." Now, I started with the YMCA in that story for a reason. This YMCA is the city of Sherwoods. The YMCA is a tenant. When British American Tobacco was bringing tax-free money down here and doing us a favor building that, Hitchcock went to them and bought it. And his entire idea was that they were going to be a nonprofit organization that can't get involved politically. If they do, they lose their charter, and they were going to run it cheaper than our staff. If that letter, or that editorial by Bill Middleton is accurate, you're being stolen blind. Now, I don't know whether you are or you aren't. I've heard too many stories about the Y, and my wife foolishly was a big donor for them early on. I never was. I always found out if you won, you had a free ticket. Now, what I'm telling you tonight is you better look into that, because we own that building. If they are making that kind of money off of us, and what else are they doing? And make no mistake about it, you've got the same pool of people that are in business or in the nonprofit organizations. The difference is they steal their money differently. There are tenants out there. Now, I'll be very candid. I'd rather see, if we're doing that kind of money, somebody like Tom Bezemer running it for the city of Sherwood, because this is Sherwood. This is not Tigard. This is not Hillsborough. This is not Portland. And if we put that asset in, anybody that is upset about you investigating it has got their hand in the cookie jar. And that's what that also implied, and that's the stories I've heard. And I've also seen them close down activities that don't make money for them, like Roger Buttons. He wasn't winning the fights he was losing. Shouldn't have ever tried to skateboard. Everybody knew skateboards were criminals. That's until May's lost the election, and then all of a sudden, they were human beings again. Something about crows and Cheyennes. You want to sell the Cheyenne, call them a southern crow. That'll do it every time. Looking for this fight, that's a good way to start one. But all I'm telling you is, this is Sherwood, and it's time we treat it as Sherwood, and our staff will respond. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Claus. Lathan Gorbit?
Again, my name's Lathan Gorbit. I'm with the Organ Resource Group, and I'm just here to discuss the issue that was discussed tonight in the planning meeting of medical marijuana dispensaries. I personally consult people. I have a couple dozen clients that work strictly in that industry, both in dispensaries and cultivation and in manufacturing of different sorts of products. And so I thought I'd just kind of shine a little bit of a light on what I see in the industry, which is the reason why I just chose to jump into the industry in the first place. First of all, I like the way you got, the conversation was one of the more intelligent that I've seen in a city council or a planning meeting. It really is. I mean, this, there really is a lot of this sort of like fear-based legislation conversations going, where it's like, you know, we have to save the kids from the pot kind of things, which is good, and it means well, but it really doesn't legislate well. So some of the ideas that I, or some of the things that I heard during this meeting were really good. I wanted to bring to light some of the statistics that have been brought up, and I can email this off to anybody if they'd like. Couple things involving like traffic incidences, and this is more around the buffer zones. If you're deciding to put buffer zones beyond what the state's already put in place, which, by the way, the school buffer zones that were put into place, the thousand-foot, that was purely political. It wasn't based on any statistical evidence that having a thousand-foot buffer from a medical marijuana dispensary in a school actually provided any safety to anybody. It was more just political to get the thing passed. So what they've shown is putting a medical marijuana dispensary into a community, when it comes to traffic incidences, does not change anything. When it comes to underage use, does not change anything. And when it comes to crime, it actually, we've seen statistics that shows that crime goes down. One of the reasons why, or one of the speculative reasons why is because the amount of regulation that's put on these things is very, very heavy. It's much more than a liquor store, which was compared to. And kind of going back to the medical marijuana versus recreational marijuana thing, I think they should be viewed differently. The medical should be regulated a little bit closer to how a pharmacy is regulated. They look more like a pharmacy. They look more like a health clinic or a, you know, a veterinary clinic. They don't, you know, kids passing by them don't think they're going by, you know, facilities that are up to no good or, you know, mischievous activities or anything, whatever people might think is happening. But when it comes to liquor stores, regulating them, the recreational closer to liquor stores, what, I'm sorry, I'm getting a little off here. Medical dispensary, sorry. They are very heavily regulated. Has anybody here ever been inside of one? Does anybody here have a card? They're very heavily regulated. There's a, there's a heavy security system put in place. It costs about a quarter million dollars to set one of these places up. There's a waiting room. You have to show ID, which is recorded. You have to show your card, which is recorded. There's cameras everywhere. You go inside, you have, it almost looks, they look like a jewelry store, kind of, when you go inside, not to, not to make them, you know, not trying to sell you on the idea of going in these places. But they're, you know, they're run very well. They're professional people. There's the, you know, there's, they're still trying to figure out how to get this, you know, the measurements of the CBDs and the THC and everything figured out, but they're really trying. This industry's really trying to do well. And one thing I'll say, I know I'm running out of time here, is most of the people that I've seen working in this industry have invested a lot of time and a lot of money over the last decade or so, and will invest a lot of money when they're opening up either a grow-up operation or a dispensary. The last thing they want to do is get shut down, because they broke one simple rule, which almost every lease agreement or, you know, piece of legislation put forward says, if you break these rules, you can get shut down, which I think is a good rule to have, especially if we want a clean kind of transition into a legal, you know, and regulated industry. So.
Thank you.
Yes.
So we have no other? Okay. That's all the citizen comments that I have. Onto new business. Resolution 2015-013, authorizing city manager to enter into a professional services contract with DKS Associates for the Sherwood TSP Project Implementation Refinement. Bob Galati?
Thank you, Mayor. Members of the council, the resolution before you, as the mayor stated, is a resolution to authorize the city manager to enter into a professional services contract with DKS Associates to perform a TSP, which is our Transportation System Project Implementation Refinement project. Basically, going around in some background, the TSP, which we just completed, was based on a, funded through a TGM grant, which is a Transportation Growth Management grant issued by ODOT. With this grant, it had certain restrictions placed upon it about what goals we were trying to meet, what we could do with the money, and the timeframe in which to expend those funds and get our TSP project completed. With that, we did what we could. Basically, we jammed a lot of that in there, and we got all our requirements for the TGM grant met in the TSP. However, the TSP has cost data in there that is based on orders of magnitude. It's really very rough. We're taking some wild guesses, and we're very conservative on those guesses. What we're looking at for this particular project is to take all those projects that were defined in the TSP and do a cost analysis on them, so that we can start looking at, using that data for two purposes. The first purpose is to go back through and look at it for a rate study and our SDC analysis. So those costs, if they're realistic, and we hope to get them down, they're fairly tight, will help us really define whether or not our SDCs are in line, or can we reduce them by quite a bit? And that will be the next phase. The second item is that with the reduced, or with the refined cost analysis, we can also budget more accurately when it comes time to doing these projects. We have a better idea of what it's going to cost, how revenues are going to come in, how we can generate it, and plan better with this information. So that's the general idea behind what we're doing, why we're doing it. The contract price with DKS for this work is $52,000. We're requesting a 5% contingency. We're requesting a 5% contingency just to make sure that we've got everything covered. The total cost of the project is going to be $54,600. That's the, that's a budget amount that we're not going to exceed for this, for this item. So what we're recommend, what we're asking for is approval through this process to authorize the city manager to enter into that contract agreement with DKS.
Thank you, Bob. Council questions? Counsel Henderson, did you have a question? No? No.
I have, I have one question. So it says that the contract will be funded from the Transportation Reserve Fund. Is that a line item in the budget? I'm not understanding where that's coming from.
The, the cost of this project, we actually had it budgeted out as part of our, the TSP project. We had budgeted last year for the TSP. And at that time, I also submitted for a TGM grant. So basically, I got the grant, so I've got the money sitting in a, in a, in a fund. The Reserve Fund itself is overall, it's, it's not SDC-related, if I, if I understand the budgeting aspect a little bit.
Well, it would be in the Transportation Capital Fund. So if you take a look at our budget, it's broken out into different funds. It wouldn't be in the General Fund. It would actually be in the transportation portion, which is actually in the General Fund category, but it's a separate fund. So we don't break it down by the different, whether it's an SDC or whether it's these type of monies, but it's a line item in the, in the budget, which we can show you if you'd like.
Okay. Do I have a motion?
I motion to approve Resolution 2015-013.
Second.
Got a motion and a second. All in favor?
Aye.
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 Opposed? Motion carries.
Thank you.
Thank you very much. Okay. Oh, hey. Since you're going?
Yeah.
Thank you, ma'am. We're going to move on to Resolution 2015-014, renaming the former Machine Works Building Site to Sherwood Center for the Arts. Kristin?
Hello. Hi. Yes, as you mentioned in the State of the City address, we are finally ready to adopt a new name for the facility formerly known as the Machine Works.
Yeah, that's not a very good name.
Okay. No, that's not a good name. And at the January 20th work session, we looked at several different options, looked at several different names. And it was actually quite amazing that everybody came to the same conclusion very quickly, all who were in attendance. And everybody seemed to fall on Sherwood Center for the Arts. And we've since had a cultural arts meeting and I can tell you that they were all very excited about that name and very pleased with it as well. Yes. So I think it's a great name and we just ask for your approval and adoption tonight.
Fantastic. Thank you, Kristin. Any comments? Questions? Do I have a motion?
I'll move we adopt Resolution 2015-014, resolution renaming the former Machine Works Building Site to the Sherwood Center for the Arts.
All second? All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Opposed? Motion carries.
Yay.
Looks like we have a new name for our new center.
Thank you.
All right. And so we'll move right on to Resolution 2015-015, adopting rates and a fee schedule for the Sherwood Center for the Arts.
Now that we have a name and we have a facility, we need to be able to charge some fees. These, this is the fee schedule that you looked at at the January 20th work session as well. We did change a little bit of language to hopefully make it a little bit more clear on the deposit and then also the prime time, non-prime time, business hours. But other than that, it's basically the same. Staff's done a lot of work at looking at comparables around the area and feels like this is in the marketplace. We're not going to be the highest. We're not going to be the least expensive. We also realized that we probably have not thought of everything. We're going to need to get into the facility, see, see how long it takes staff to actually do some of the things in, in here and reassess the fees. Luckily, we're just a few months away from adopting a new fee schedule and we can make some adjustments at that time as we can every year that we need to. So I feel like this is a great start and we ask for your consideration tonight to go ahead and adopt the fee schedule.
Okay. Kristin, I have a question.
Yes.
You've changed the language to refer to business hours and business hours is not defined on the fee schedule. Did you?
Yes. At this, and that's one of the reasons why we were leaning away from saying business hours originally. We believe that business hours are probably going to be either nine to six or 10 to six, basic Monday through Friday. So what that fee is, is if staff is already in the building, it's going to cost us a lot less, obviously, to let somebody in to use the facility. So anything outside of that, if we're needing to call staff in, is when we would have a monitor there and that's when the fees would go up. So in our marketing materials, we'll actually identify what that time is. And we also realize that that, that could change as well. We may decide to open at nine o'clock and realize no one's coming before 11:00. We don't need to be open at nine. So we'll adjust the times accordingly. But we were trying to build some flexibility in there for ourselves. Thank you.
Thank you. Any other question?
I just want to maybe suggest, especially on the classroom, if somebody wants to rent that for a full day, maybe coming up with a price break for a full day rate. Especially like at the resident, non, non-profit rate.
Mm-hmm.
That's over $300 for a day. And so I thought maybe if there's some sort of price break where if they are going to do all day long, there could be some sort of, and that might come later on, like you said.
Right. As we see how people are using the facility and what some of the obstacles.
Yeah. Because I know that I've been in some situations where we've needed a room all day long.
Right.
And at $40 an hour for eight or nine hours, it gets pretty pricey.
Right. And in the classroom, I believe, for the nonprofit resident, it's $15 an hour. Yes. With a two, two-hour minimum. So it would still add up quickly if you were in there for half a day or for all of the day.
Yeah. So maybe a bulk discount, as, so to speak.
Is that something that council wants to address now or do you want to address that at a later time after the facility has an opportunity to have some programming?
I, I think it would work okay to wait until we get in the facility and see how it's being utilized. If you wanted to look at a discount, at this point, the only way I can think of doing it is if it was a percentage discount.
So you would bring that back to us if you feel that that might be something in the future?
I don't need it now to approve this.
Okay.
I just think it might be nice to add that in.
It's a good comment, yeah.
As somebody who
And we can see what the requests are.
Has needed that for full-day things. I know that that would be something I would ask as somebody calling you to use it for the day.
Right.
Okay. Great. Thank you.
Thank you.
Thanks. Anybody else? Do I have a motion?
I will. Motion that we approve Resolution 2015-015.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries.
Thank you.
Thank you, Kristin.
And we are moving on to the council appointment to vacancy. We have gone through a interview process and since we have a group of new counselors, if I could bother Sylvia to go through the process of our voting, I would certainly appreciate that.
So, Mayor, similar to our prior process, the council conducted interviews. Upon the conclusion of those interviews, they followed the municipal code, which basically states that the council will then consider those interviewees. And basically, by a nomination process, you can nominate to put an individual's name on a ballot. And then the council will proceed with a ballot vote. That ballot must indicate your name. You must put your name on it. These votes are not anonymous votes. Upon the conclusion of those ballots, myself and the city manager would take those ballots, put them on a spreadsheet, and then provide the results back to you. The council will continue to vote on the names on those ballots until you come to a decision with the majority of, with the candidate having the majority of the votes. So this evening, I was kind of been talking to the city manager and Tom Bezemer. We kind of followed the process that the council followed previously. One of the, if the current council calls, there was a motion at the previous process of having all candidates appear on the ballot rather than having a nomination process to have those names on the ballot. So considering that process, I did produce ballots this evening, having all applicants on the ballot. If the council chooses not to go that direction, then I would ask for about five minutes to go and redo those ballots. But at this point, all five applicants, the two that interviewed this evening and the three individuals that were considered from the previous process, their names are on that ballot.
Okay. And I just have one question for clarification, since we do have multiple candidates and you said that the majority of council, would that be a majority of council, meaning you would need four votes to win the, the appointment process? Or would it be the person who receives the most votes?
Kristin, answer that?
Since we have multiple candidates, just to clarify.
The charter requires majority, sorry, the charter requires a majority of the council, which would be four, in order for an appoint, person to be appointed.
Okay. And so, all right. Excellent. Does the council have any opinion on the difference between using the ballots that our city recorder has provided or doing something differently? I'm certainly all right with using the ballots that Sylvia has placed before us.
I just have a couple of clarification questions, if that's appropriate.
Sure. I'm okay with the ballots.
Okay.
That's what we're saying at this point. I'm okay with it.
Yeah, the ballots seem fine to me. Just a point of clarification for the city attorney. Council appointments, are they required by the charter or our code or are they not? In other words, can we, can we appoint today? Can we not appoint today? Can we wait? What is the, what's the?
Right. The charter provides two procedures for filling a council appointment, but both are, well, it says if there's more than 13 months left in the term, then it has to be done by election. If there's less than 13, it can be filled by appointment. But the authority to appoint is discretionary. You could decide not to appoint someone and wait till the next election. That's the advice we've given to staff based on the text of Charter Section 32. So you don't have to make a decision, but if you want to, this is the process that Julia or Sylvia described is the process you would follow.
And how does council feel about that? Any comments?
Well, I have a couple of com, just a few comments. This has been a very great experience for me. I actually reviewed all the applications, asked some excellent applicants, very pleased about that. Talked with some of them individually and that was excellent. It's, it's been, it's a hard decision to make. And I started to think about, and I need to, if it's okay to go through this process for me, when you have people that are obviously running for a council office in the future and they want to go and get an appointment, I have the concern on the one hand about bringing someone on council that has already applied to be running for a position and later on. So you're appointing someone to fill a position until, until the election arrives. And I thought about that for quite a bit and I thought, you know, that, that's a concern that I have about bringing any one of these candidates on in an appointed position that they already are or have or thinking of applying to running for a council position. And then I started to think about, well, why also, there's, there's the, another side to that and that is if you have someone that is applied and they've got credentials and they've got the desire to serve, then the appointment process could easily be made just based on the research that I've done personally, the conversations that I've had, and then the reviewing of the application. So anyway, I just thought, I wanted to share that because for, for those of you and everybody on council, it's, it's a, it's a process and you have to really be able to take a look at what you've got, take a look at the applications, do your interviews and make that personal decision on your own. So anyway, I wanted to throw that out there. If anybody else on council or mayor wanted to comment.
I'd just like to comment that in this particular instance, I favor one particular candidate who I think is above and beyond experienced more than all the others, although that doesn't mean to say that any of the other ones are any less experienced or great people. But I do believe that Beth Cook would make an excellent appointment. And in that regard, Ms. Cook and Mr. King are running off together. I think it would serve the public well to see how those candidates are actually performing their job. And so I think that's a unique opportunity, should Ms. Cook be appointed. Obviously, it's not up to me solely, but I think that's a great opportunity for the public to see. Secondly, I think that we have not rushed to judgment in making this decision. We've had a couple of meetings. We did not immediately appoint someone. And I think that, I know I encouraged everyone that I spoke to to review the interviews of the candidates that were recorded, the three of them earlier. And I was quite impressed with those interviews. We had two more today. We have background interviews or applications that we also looked at. So I think there's been a process. We followed it and I'm ready to vote. And the other last point is I think it's really important that we continue to move the city forward. And in that regard, I think that there may be opportunities where we are tied in a 3-3 vote and adding that council appointment tonight or soon rather than later is important so that we can continue to conduct business should a tie event occur. So that's just my comments.
Thank you, Counsel Harris. Do you have a comment?
I had not thought of the two counselors running and being able to see that from a citizen's point of view, but that's valid and I think interesting perspective. When I went through, I watched, I actually went to some of the interviews prior to the two new applicants. But when the, this new process started, I re-watched all of them again and went through all of the applications. And again, you know, we pull from what we know and what I know is my background in HR. So I looked at these in a way from a perspective of HR and a business perspective of looking through them like I'm hiring someone for a job, which again and again and again, we keep hearing that this is a job, this is a position. And I'll tell you from the hours and hours of meetings and time that I've put in over the last six weeks, it is a job. It is a very low-paying job, but it's a job.
Unpaid volunteer.
And just from that perspective, there's definitely one candidate who in my eyes is almost overqualified and in a position where you're an unpaid volunteer, I don't think you don't get hired for being overqualified like you might in the private sector. You, you get pulled in and, and we pull you in quickly because you're overqualified and we want you to use all of your expertise. And again, the other candidates are great and I met some new, new people that I had not known before and I'm excited to see them on more volunteer things. And I think that they have a lot of potential as well, but again, one candidate in, in her interviews, Beth Cook, and in her application just far exceeded some of the others with her prior government experience and her degree in political science as well as, I mean, just a plethora of things that make her a standout client. So, sorry, candidate. So my support is also for Beth Cook. And again, I just looked at it strictly from an HR perspective and who I would hire for the job if I had the job requirements in front of me. So, and I also agree that I think we need a full council. The, the next election is not until May and it is pretty far away and I think we need to have a full council for the duration. So six and six is a tough, tough thing to have for four months. Three and three, excuse me. You can do math.
Sylvia, I just wanted to ask a clarification question because you talked about the nomination process, being that two of our counselors have, you know, basically nominated Beth Cook. Does that need to happen or are they automatically nominated by your ballot process? Is everyone on your ballot nominated and we are just having a discussion of that?
So kind of two parts. So note to your first question. The second, the second portion is everyone is on this ballot because I followed the process of the previous process and this appointment. That is completely council discretion. You don't have to follow that process.
Yes.
You can have a nomination process where that gets those names on the ballot. That's completely your choice per the code.
Okay. Thank you. Okay. Any other council comments?
I guess I'll put my two cents in. All the candidates are qualified. They all have unique backgrounds and unique experiences and unique ways of thinking about things. My personal My personal concern is, there is a record on one candidate, and you can watch it on video in the Planning Commission. And I served on the Planning Commission for a year, and I understand the, kind of the boundaries, the rules of how the Planning Commission works. And so when I watched the video of the last Planning Commission, and they voted on the PUD for D.R. Horton Development over there across Minneke there, on 99. And the Planning Commission was coming to a vote on this PUD, and this particular person decided to abstain, which is not a luxury you have on the Planning Commission. Because as a Planning Commission, you're, you go through the requirements of what the developer, whoever, is standing in front of you, and if they meet these regulations and all these things, it's not a political thing whether you like it or not. You either approve it, or you deny it, based on those qualifications of whether they've met those requirements or not. And this particular person expressed in the video that, even though, you know, it meets all the requirements, she still had a dissatisfaction with something, which had nothing to do with the requirements, and she abstained. And in my book, that kind of a decision, you don't, you don't do that on the Planning Commission. In my mind, I question, well, how is she going to reason other things on the board, and this board here is particularly? Because it is political here. And so, I look at as, everybody in this room knows how this board is, and how it's divided. And yes, we may be politically divided, but as you can see tonight, when we voted on things, we were unanimous. And I don't see a huge decision coming down between now and May that we're going to be divided on. I think as a board of six, we can function, and we will. And I personally feel that it would be better to have the vote and let the people decide who's going to fill that seat than to appoint someone tonight. That's how I personally feel. And based on what I've seen on this person's performance, I have a concern about that. Now, you can disagree with me, that's fine, but I've served on the Planning Commission in all my time, and, and knowing how the Planning Commission functions, you never abstain, especially at the end, unless you've got some kind of situation where you have to remove yourself in the beginning of the process of this hearing of whatever comes before the Planning Commission, but you don't do it at the very end. So that's my concern. I'm, you know, I, I think she has qualifications, yes, but when it comes to the decision-making process and making a decision, and, and voting on that decision, I have a concern there, whether it's politically expedient or not. Anyway, that's my two cents.
Councilor Anderson?
So the position that's up for appointment, staff, this is a question for you, please. The position that's up for appointment tonight would be handled in the next available election, which would be in May, correct?
Correct.
Right, so the next available election is actually not May, it's March. And so, if we were to, the council majority decided to appoint a candidate that's running in the March election for a position that was vacated in September, and they were appointed to a position in which, and then they win an election in March, the election won't be certified before the deadline is to file for the May election, correct? Because I believe the May election deadline is March 23rd with the county, I don't know if.
Sylvia, do you have any insight here? I'm not very clear on the deadline dates for.
And I guess my concern, my motivation for that is, each one of these elections is costing us somewhere between fifteen and twenty thousand dollars, because we're not sharing this election with anybody else on the ballot. And it's a dollar fifty to a dollar, or two dollars per registered voter. We have ten thousand three hundred registered voters. So if that necessitates having an additional election in September, we've almost paid for the dog park.
Why would we have to have a second election, another election in September?
You mean a third election?
Yeah, a third election.
Well, I'm not sure how the applicants for the May election is going to work out, and when, Beth Cook is a current, since Beth Cook is the topic, I guess, I started thinking about, she's a candidate for the March election, and you're, you're thinking about appointing her to a seat that's not the March election.
Right.
So then you vacate another seat, and the certification of that election won't be until after the deadline for the May election.
Okay, I'm gonna, Sylvia, you want to go through that?
So council, I don't have the specific dates as far as when the city will receive the certified election results from the county.
Right.
What I, what I can tell you is the county has a timeline that they have to meet to provide us with that information, and then the council has to adopt that information. So upon receiving that, it would be a council meeting to adopt it, to make it official. What I, what I can, in, in looking at the scenario of the potential of Ms. Cook being appointed this evening, and running in the next election, if she does win that next election, the council will then have to determine another seat vacant. The, in doing so, that would result in another potential election in September or in November. So, so it's just by, by default, you're going to have another vacant seat.
Wait, can I clarify something? So we have two vacant seats. So if Ms. Cook wins the election, she would be taking Counselor King's position, so we would actually be appointing someone if we wanted to for the May, but the May election would still happen for the open seat. Am I missing something?
Yeah, that's correct.
So you still would have the May election for the seat that council.
Right, so there would be no September election.
And then we would, there would be no September election.
There'd be an appointment.
Right.
If we decided to appoint a seventh person, but I don't think it would include an election.
Okay, so I'd have to, honestly, you cut me off guards, what happened?
Yeah, so if the charter says that the seat is filled at the next available election after the seat is determined vacant.
But we have two vacant seats right now.
Right.
No.
Yeah, Dan is interim, he's, so his seat is technically vacant.
It's, right, it is, it is an appointed seat.
His seat is the one coming up for the election.
So that is the vacant seat.
That seat is on the.
Right, that is the current vacant seat.
No.
This is on the March ballot.
Correct.
Yes, the current, yeah, March seat. That is the May seat. So whenever that election occurs, that seat will be filled, should it be Beth Cook or Dan King. And in May, that seat will be, so it would be an appointment process, there would not be a September election.
Whoever we appoint is irrelevant to the election process.
Totally irrelevant.
They're two separate things.
One person is appointed, one person is elected. Does that make a little bit more sense?
Madam Mayor, I'd like to call the question.
You want to what?
Call the question.
Call the question, okay. I would like, I, I would like an opportunity to just say something very briefly, before we call the question, is, is that all right with you?
Yeah.
I was not actually quite finished.
Oh, okay, well then, I'm going to let, I'm going to let, council, does that make a little bit more sense?
No, it still makes no sense to me, because.
Okay, it makes sense to me, okay, go ahead, Councilor Anderson.
The March election will not be certified before the May election deadlines have happened.
But I don't think it matters.
It doesn't matter.
Well, I, I beg to differ that I think it does. Because the seat vacancy application process for the current seat will be before the March election is finished or certified, so.
Do you have any?
I think it's confusing to potential applicants. And if you appoint somebody for the vacant seat, that still has to be done by an election, because it's greater than thirteen months. So I think it's a confusing process to appoint somebody who's already running for, for an office.
Is it Dan?
I also was very impressed with the candidates who came out tonight. We didn't interview, or re-interview everybody, but we were able to re-review the videos. And I think that having a full council is an advantage, but not required, as Councilor King put. I think we had an applicant tonight that is unique, and that is Commissioner Griffin, who already serves on the Planning Commission alongside Commissioner Cook. And I personally am in favor for him, just because he represents a group of interested residents, as well as businesses, who are not represented at the table, who live and/or work in Old Town. And having thought about that for a while, he is not running in the March election, which would sort of clarify and allow the voters to cast their ballot based on the candidates they see. I do have a concern about the March election, in that Counselor King is the only person who submitted a voters pamphlet submission. So they'll get a ballot, but there'll only be one person in the voters guide, which is the primary tool, and also a portion of that money that we pay, and the other two candidates didn't submit anything for the voters pamphlet, so that is a bit of an anomaly. And I know the county has deadlines, and, and I wasn't necessarily paying attention, but I confirmed with the county this morning that only one person actually met the deadline and had submitted a voters pamphlet. And those come out first, and then the ballots come out second. So because of those complications, sometimes I wonder if it's not easier, or not easier, but simpler to appoint somebody who's not running in the next election to serve, instead of appointing somebody who's already on the ballot for a position that's being elected in May. So those are my, those are my two cents. And that's what I've heard from constituents, is they're still trying to figure out which, which seat is for which position, and how long it lasts. And I also have a concern about the cost. Each special election, we bear that cost, and I don't think it's insignificant. So, thank you.
All right, thank you. So I just have a couple of comments. I am incredibly happy that we received so many applicants, and that people are interested in serving on the city council. I think that new voices is an excellent thing. I, I find it a little bit unnerving that, instead of talking about someone that Counselor King really liked, he instead decided to run down someone who, in the pool of candidates that he didn't want appointed. I would prefer to hear about why someone is great, and, and I think that that is the kind of candidate that I would like sitting up here with us. It is not confusing at all to me, because we have two open seats, and we will have two elections. And that is because two people who were sitting on council ran for the mayor's seat, and that created the May appointment. And it's because Robin Folsom resigned after the election deadline for the November election, and so we have this seat open. I think that it would be fantastic to have someone who has such great experience and can jump right in. And so for me, after listening to the interviews and reading the applications, I agree that Beth Cook is overqualified. How she wants to campaign is really completely irrelevant to me. She can campaign however she likes for the position. I think that there's lots and lots of great ways to campaign, and I think you should go for the one that works for you, and let the best man or woman win. But my vote will be for Beth Cook. The question has been called, could you please pass out the ballots?
So council, on these ballots, there is a ballot round number, so this will be round one. Please sign your name on the line that indicates, make your selection, your selection should only be one, one individual, and then just return those to me, please.
Are we allowed to ask questions? What happens, and this might be for Chris, if we all vote for someone different? There's five people.
She, she says that's her four. It has to be.
Oh.
You guys need masks out there. We're all like coughing.
I'm afraid we're signing up what is out there right now.
Oh, sorry.
Okay, so I did a quick tally on the first ballot, and we do have a majority. So we have four votes for Beth Cook, and two votes for Russell Griffin. So you have your four votes to appoint Beth Cook on an interim basis. And are we prepared to do swearing-in tonight, or?
Yes, we just spoke about that, thank you, council. Pursuant to Sherwood Municipal Code, Chapter 2.04.034, Beth Cook has received the highest number of votes and is hereby declared to be appointed to fill the vacant council seat position. Beth Cook will be seated as a city councillor upon taking the oath. Beth Cook, will you please come forward to take your oath?
And mayor, if, if I can have two minutes to run to my desk and get the proper form?
Absolutely. We, we'll just wait. And as, yeah, you know what, we will take a five-minute break till 25 after. Okay, I'd like to call us back to order, and once again invite Beth Cook forward to be sworn in. I need a mic. All right, thank you very much. And thank you, council. Please raise your right hand and repeat after me. I, Beth Cook.
I, Beth Cook.
Do solemnly swear.
Do solemnly swear.
That I will support the Constitution.
That I will support the Constitution.
And the laws of United States.
And the laws of the United States.
And the state of Oregon.
And the state of Oregon.
And the laws of the City of Sherwood.
And the laws of the City of Sherwood.
And will faithfully.
And will faithfully.
Honestly.
Honestly.
And impartially.
And impartially.
Discharge the responsibilities.
Discharge the responsibilities.
Bestowed upon me.
Bestowed upon me.
As a city councillor of the City of Sherwood.
As a city councillor of the City of Sherwood.
Congratulations.
Thank you.
To our public hearings, ordinance 2015-002, amending Chapter 8.12 of the Sherwood Municipal Code to adopt by reference the 2014 State Fire Code and adopting the 2014 Towalton Valley Fire and Rescue Fire Prevention Code. Scott McKee.
Good evening, Scott McKee, city building official.
I'm John Wolfe, deputy fire marshal with Towalton Valley Fire and Rescue.
Typically, every three years, an updated version of the Oregon Fire Code is adopted by the Oregon State Fire Marshal. When this code is adopted by the state, the city is therefore required to also adopt this current code. To go along with this, Towalton Valley Fire and Rescue also amends their local fire prevention code and standards, and each city within their district is also required to adopt the local fire district's current code. This ordinance is, is basically just to amend the city municipal code to reflect these most currently adopted codes, which is the 2014 Oregon Fire Code and the current 2014 Towalton Valley Fire and Rescue Fire Prevention Code. So if you have any questions, we'd be happy. So if you have any questions, we'd be happy to answer them.
Any questions? Thank you. Do I have a motion?
This is a public hearing, so I think you have to take public testimony.
Oh, thank you. I'm very sorry. Thank you for the reminder. Do I have, I didn't have any application, so do I have any?
Mayor, you do not have any forms.
Okay.
You can invite.
Okay. Would anyone here like to comment on adopting? Okay. Hearing none, I will close the public. And Sylvia, may I now call for?
If there's no discussion.
The ordinance is always confusing, I think.
Mayor, if there's no discussion amongst the council, you can ask for discussion. If there's not, then we can proceed with calling for a motion.
Okay. I'm not hearing any discussion. Does council have any?
Yeah, my understanding is we're just aligning ourselves with the state code.
That's correct. So we're consistent throughout the state, and we're required by law to adopt the state adopted codes.
Okay, it's pretty simple, Sylvia?
It is fairly simple. The other thing I will remind the council is our new process for ordinances, having a first and second reading. If the council chooses this evening to adopt on the first reading, I just need to remind you of that.
Okay. How does council feel about that?
Well, I believe that in charter, in the charter review committee, when we were looking that, we have to have two readings, and then only in an emergency situation should we actually move to adopt, is what the intention was. So if this is not an emergency and there's really no comment, can we wait and have that second reading?
I don't see any reason why we couldn't wait. I think that's perfectly reasonable. Give people another opportunity for input. I think that's great. I think that's a great clarification. I think that there isn't any reason. Scott, do you see any reason why we couldn't wait for a second hearing?
Sooner the better, because the codes are adopted by the state, and so the longer wait, the farther behind we are.
Joe, can we get this on the next agenda?
Yes, it's scheduled for your next meeting in two weeks. And I know this is new, but as someone that participated in the charter review, it's fairly common in other cities when you're adopting new law, which is what you're doing, to do it over two nights. That really, I think, the intent was to allow the public to participate in the process. If it was an emergency, the staff report would have recommended that this is an emergency and probably requested the council to consider acting on it in one night and not doing two readings. That's what I have experienced in other cities that have this two-step process. That was clearly the intent of the charter review committee, whether the voters knew that's what they were voting on. I can't speak for the voters, but it did pass overwhelmingly, so.
Madam Mayor, let me make a clarification here. We're actually talking about two different things, the date of adoption versus the effective date, and it's two different provisions of the charter. The charter, under Section 16, does say that adoption of an ordinance requires approval by a majority of the council at two separate meetings, separated by at least six days. However, that's A3 says, "An ordinance may be adopted at a single meeting by unanimous vote of all sitting councillors on the question." So if it's unanimous, you can adopt at a single meeting. Now, does it take effect immediately or in 30 days? That's the next section, Section 17. It says, "An ordinance normally takes effect in 30 days, unless there's an emergency, the council declares an emergency, in which case it can become effective immediately." So you can adopt in one meeting if it's unanimous, but the charter does, the first rule in the charter is, if it's an ordinance, adopt it in two meetings. The exception is if it's unanimous, you can adopt it in one. The effective date, the rule is, it takes effect 30 days from the date of adoption, unless, the exception, you want to declare an emergency, in which case it can take effect immediately. So that's adoption date versus effective date.
Well, and I wanted to comment as well, that the actual ordinance that went before the voters did not have an emergency clause in there that said you cannot adopt in one meeting. So I don't think there's any requirement that we have to read it at two sessions, as Chris has mentioned, but it was not, the intent of the charter review committee, if that's what it was, was not clear in the legislation that was passed before the public. So I think on issues where there's no real dispute over adopting something, that we can't get it done.
Well, I also have a question. Is there any, do we have any ability not to adopt? I mean, we have to follow Oregon, right? I mean, we can't just say, never mind, no thanks.
You pretty much have to adopt this one.
So, I mean, is there really a point? I mean, if we're unanimous and we don't really have a choice?
And I heard no public comment when we opened it up. I'm just inclined to agree with Counselor Harris and Counsel President Robinson that a delay is not necessarily in the public's best interest. I'm always an advocate of giving people lots and lots of opportunity to comment, but if it's just to comment and it's not going to change anything, what is the point?
Yeah, in situations where there may be a public comment is warranted and could have an effect on the outcome, that's a totally different story than something we're required by law to do.
And it sounds like from the charter, then, we've got this language in the beginning that says two readings, and then the second piece is, we can go ahead and adopt without a second reading. That's what it sounds like.
That's correct, as long as, as long as the vote is unanimous.
Okay, so do I have a motion from council?
So I will motion to approve ordinance 2015-002.
Do I have a second?
I'll second.
Okay, so the motion would be to recaption and adopt ordinance?
Oh, and then do I say? I make a motion to recaption and adopt ordinance 2015-002.
Thank you, counsel, for the second. Ordinance 2005-002, amending Chapter 8.12 of the Sherwood Municipal Code to adopt by reference the 2014 State Fire Code and adopting the 2014 Tuolton Valley Fire and Rescue Fire Prevention Code. Counselor Cook?
Aye.
Counselor Harris?
Aye.
Counselor Kuiper?
Aye.
Counselor King?
Aye.
Counselor Henderson?
Aye.
Counsel President Robinson?
Aye.
Mayor Clark?
Aye.
Thank you. City manager report.
Thank you, mayor and council. I just have two items. One is a reminder for the public and for the council. It's been referenced a number of times tonight, including in the mayor's day of the city, that we are embarking on Sherwood West, this preliminary consent plan for 1,200 acres west of our current city limits. This will be about a 12-month process, but it's an important process as we start to plan for growth over the next 30 to 40 to 50 years. So one of the first steps in terms of community engagement is happening this Thursday evening. There's a community open house on February 5th from 5:00 to 6:00 p.m. It will be at Edie Ridge Elementary School in the cafeteria, so not here. It'll be closer to the areas that we are starting to look at. There will be a community advisory committee meeting that will follow at 6:30. So if you didn't have those on your agendas, on your calendars, that's certainly a meeting that would be really very worthwhile to attend. You'll probably be getting a link tomorrow to a video that we've put together to kind of explain. It's about a two, two-and-a-half-minute video. Mayor Clark was in it, myself and some other citizens that really are trying to solicit input from the community. Now's the time to be starting to talk about, what does this area look like when it comes into the city? That could be decades from now, but now's the time to get involved. And I think people are getting that. They're hearing more and more about this. But going to the open house on Thursday night is a good start. The other thing I wanted to mention, and certainly the council and the planning commission and the board and commission members that use this room are going to see some AV enhancements over the next three to four weeks. You'll get new monitors. We're getting new microphones. Most of this equipment, even though this building is fairly new, is all analog, and we live in a digital world. So one of the things that I think for the citizen is that we will, after the implementation of the new AV equipment, we will be able to broadcast live city council meetings and planning commission meetings, which, right now, it's taped. You have to, you can't watch live, but once this equipment is installed and we get the kinks worked out, we're going to start broadcasting your meetings and probably the planning commission live on our website and over our public access channel. So you're going to see some improvements. Hopefully you'll like those improvements. This room will be kind of in disarray somewhat over the next few weeks as we install the equipment. So we're pretty excited. I know Brad Crawford and his group in IT is very excited about the upgrades. So. Any questions for myself or the directors that are here? Thank you.
Thank you. Okay, I have something special tonight. Tonight is a special night. It is Counselor Linda Henderson's birthday tonight. Yes, it is. Now, I'm not going to say which one, because that would not be nice. But I wanted to give a shout-out.
Excuse me, but I'd like to, as a matter of point of order, this is not on the agenda.
But council announcements.
No, 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 no. My birthday is not on the agenda.
All right. It's not the highest quality, but I'm still doing it. And she's getting a happy birthday. Here we go.
Happy birthday to you. Happy birthday to you. Happy birthday, dear Linda. Happy birthday to you.
Okay.
And that you feel better on the next.
Yeah, because that was kind of a bummer drag that she's.
You might want to use real instruments next time.
I know, what can I say?
But thank you for the sentiment. And it's my understanding that former Counselor Folsom baked a cake, and it's in there.
Okay. After the meeting.
If anybody would like to have a piece of cake, there's a whole sheet, flat sheet of cake, so. But thank you.
Yes. All right, other council announcements.
You can go first. It's your birthday, you can go first. I have a long list. I will try to be quick. Tomorrow night is Broadway Bits. It's a fundraiser at the high school. The students, what they do is they choose a Broadway musical or show, and they put on a small skit. It's a fundraiser. I was invited to be a judge, so it's an honor to do that, and we have the most talented, amazing students in Sherwood. Not only are they amazing on stage, but many of them are amazing at putting these types of events together, which I think they do primarily on their own and with very little help from the advisors, so we have great leadership at the high school. We also have Mary Poppins. The VPA is doing Mary Poppins at our new Sherwood Center for the Arts. Can finally say it for, for real, officially, and that is two weekends, March 5th, 6th, and 7th, 12th, 13th, and 14th. It's an all-age community production, so we have first graders all the way up to adults. Didn't want to say somebody's age there. And then, so that's a very exciting opportunity to be the first production in our new center, and I'm sure we'll learn a lot, getting that, breaking it in, so looking forward to that. So if you have the opportunity to attend either at the high school tomorrow night or Mary Poppins, Mary Poppins is at vpafoundation.org. We also have a puzzle tournament coming up at the Sherwood Police Station, their community room, which is a valuable asset. I see it being used a lot more during the day as well, and so I think that's great. We have a puzzle tournament on February 21st. That's an all-ages, individuals or teams or family teams puzzle tournament, and that is at sherwoodarts.org. And I am also, as Mayor Clark mentioned in her State of the City address, very excited about the police advisory board. That is a brand-new board that the chief brought to us about a year and a half ago, and I think we had 14 or 15 applicants, and those individuals have been nominated and will be notified when that's on the agenda for the 17th. And timing is everything, even in politics. We just spoke about marijuana in our work session. As the gentleman who came earlier, that is an ongoing issue for our state and every city in the entirety of Oregon, and I'm looking forward to polling the new people, who, six of them have never served on a board or commission, if they're the ones that actually accept the nomination to be on the committee, and I'd like to get their input on this issue so we can bring it up to council and see what they think about issues of medicinal as well as recreational marijuana. So looking forward to getting going. And we have a very tight time schedule for medicinal marijuana, and so we need to get feedback quickly from not only the board members, but from anybody else in the community. There's an additional event going to be happening on March 20th at the Sherwood Center for the Arts, and that is a Tom Grant concert. Tom Grant is coming to town to perform a two-set concert for a people-to-person fundraiser. Initially, this was going to be at the high school, but we thought moving it to the Sherwood Center for the Arts was a much better venue. And as the president of the Sherwood Foundation for the Arts, if we support the center, as we always have, I thought it was good to put our money where our mouth is. And so those rates that we just adopted are the rates that we'll pay to host that event, and it's a fundraiser to send two students, which are only two of eight from the state of Oregon, that have been invited to the Student Ambassador Program for People-to-People for this next summer, where they're going to Ecuador and the Galapagos Islands. And then, lastly, this is something I wanted to, maybe at a future date, talk to the council about, but I attended in Tuolton, they've had a teen advisory committee, and I think it's something that Joe and I talked about about a year ago, that would be potentially a great addition, maybe not in the immediate future, but in the near future, of having a teen advisory committee. And what they did is they had what was called the TAC Summit, and they met with councillors, and they talked about alcohol, marijuana, transportation, safety, police, and homelessness, and those people who, like the food bank councillor, I mean, Mayor Clark mentioned, and how to get teens involved and how to get input from them. And so I'd like the council, if we can, to maybe have staff do a little bit of research about, you know, what other TACs are in town. They also have a TAC committee for their library. And we have a high schooler, and I think that's a valuable asset, who serves on our library board, and I think moving that a step further and having a teen advisory committee would be a great asset. They would come once a month, or as often as the council would like, to make a presentation, and then they often participate in city events and other events that are in our community. So I have a little bit of information I can scan in and email to councillors if they'd like to see what we talked about. And they were very gracious to me, allowing me to come. I was invited by a Tuolton councillor, and they were very gracious to me and very open about what they think's working, what's not working, and so I think it's something that would be valuable to look to in the future. And that's all I have. Thank you.
Okay. Thank you. Counselor King?
I think Counsel Henderson just about covered it all. I can't think of anything else at this moment to speak of, so I apologize.
It's her birthday, she gets the floor.
That's true.
It's only fair.
So I'm done, I'm fine.
Okay. Counselor Kuiper?
I know. Counselor Henderson said it all. Stealing my thunder on the Broadway Bits, my daughter's performing, and one of my favorites, who's the daughter of someone sitting in the audience, she's one of my favorites, she'll be performing, I'll say her name, Rebecca Young, and my daughter Lauren, among a lot of other fantastically talented kids, will be performing, and it is a fundraiser. So if you do have a chance to go out there and see these kids perform, they're amazing. I went to the Tuolton River Wildlife Refuge, National Wildlife Refuge Friends Meeting, and those people rock. They are a well-oiled machine. I cannot believe it. These people are getting in grants after grant. They are doing incredible things. They're well-organized. I just can't say enough great things about this group, so I'm very excited to be a liaison to that group. Another great group I went to just yesterday, which is the Parks Recreation Board. They've got a lot of great things going on. They finally have some money to do something with SDC, System Development Charges, and now, finally, after about 12 years, they're getting ready to build out, or at least finally do a final plan for Woodhaven Park. So they'll be doing several design charrettes in the community. There's a lot of energy there for that, so it's, there's a lot going on, so.
Yep. Thank you. Counselor Cook?
First, I would like to thank the council for the chance to serve in this role. Sherwood is an amazing community, and I see many wonderful opportunities for us to work together. And I do have two announcements. One is the Girl Scouts of Oregon and Southwest Washington is actually sponsoring a marijuana education forum at 6:30 on Tuesday, February 24th, at St. Anthony's Parish Center. And second, the Oregon State Legislature kicked off the 2015 session yesterday, and I would encourage all citizens, you know, citizens to make a visit to their state capital during the next six months. Their voices are a very important part of the process. Their voices are a very important part of the process, and there are many, many important pieces of legislation, including around marijuana, that will be discussed over the next two months.
Thank you, Councilor. Councilor Harris?
That was pretty good for your first time.
She's amazing. Go ahead.
Okay, I would like to first talk about the library. 21,000 people visited the library in January. It's a lot of people for our little town. We also had the library welcomed Holocaust survivor Alter Weiner on Saturday, January 24th. Over 200 people attended that event. The doors were open in the back and the side, and they were spilling out. They actually had to turn away another 200 people who wanted to come in here. He had stopped doing public appearances. He's 88 years old, and because of the large number of people that they had to turn away, he agreed to do an encore performance. So, he will be joining, joining us again at the Center for the Arts on May 16th at 2:00 p.m. Doors will open at 12:30. It's first-come, first-served. As we have seen, he is a popular speaker, so if you are interested in that, get there early and find your seat. It is free to the public, so it's a great time to come check out the center and also the rare opportunity to speak to a Holocaust and listen to a Holocaust survivor.
And I was whispering over there, are we videotaping that?
We're looking into it.
We're looking into that, so.
To put it on the website?
Yes.
Fantastic.
Also, the library started the Homework Help Program last month. It's for grades six through 12. It's every Tuesday afternoon for math and science. There are one-on-one sessions. They're 20 minutes each. You can call and book an appointment between 3:00 and 4:00, and 4:00 and 5:00, and it's a really great resource for parents who can't really help their kids with their homework anymore. I'm already seeing that in third grade. And so, six through 12, I could imagine it's just going to get harder. Thank you, New Math and Core. Also, Thursday, February 19th at 3:30, our library manager really wanted me to tell you all about this and get this out there on the video. February 19th at 3:30, they will be doing a preview of Mary Poppins in the stacks. Mary Poppins, Jane and Michael Banks will be singing "A Spoonful of Sugar," and then they will go over to the children's area, and they will talk about their experiences in acting and things. So, this will be a great chance to get a preview of the show and get your kids excited about acting, and they can talk to the kids in the show about their experiences and they, what they love about it, and hopefully get your kids the acting bug. So, that's the library update. Sherwood, our Sherwood Cultural Arts Commission, we met, had our first meeting with me. They're having an open house for our Sherwood Center for the Arts, which is February 28th from 11:00 to 3:00. I hope everyone will go. It's super exciting. The ribbon-cutting ceremony will be at 11:30. There'll be crafts for the kids in some of the classrooms, self-guided tours, so you can go around, and they'll have people stationed in the different areas to ask questions, in the sound booth and that sort of thing. They'll also have live performances on stage, so again, you'll get to see a sneak peek of Mary Poppins along with some other guests that they'll have up on stage. It's a pretty exciting time for Sherwood, I think, and a super exciting time for the Cultural Arts Commission, and also, I think, past and present staff and counselors, because this has, I know, been a dream for several of the current and past counselors, but definitely for the arts community here in Sherwood. It's a big deal. So, again, that's February 28th from 11:00 to 3:00. It's an open house. There's going to be cookies, so come get a cookie. There are also a couple of open vacancies on the Cultural Arts Commission and another one coming up soon. Those vacancies are on the city's website, so we encourage you to go fill out an application. Those will be open until filled, so if you have friends who are interested in the arts, who, they don't have to have experience in the arts, they don't have to be singers or actors, anybody's welcome, just fill out that application and get on those committees, because we want to fill them up, and the more voices we have and the more well-rounded those committees are, the better they are. That's all I have.
Thank you.
Yeah.
Council President Robinson?
Yes. Last Thursday, I attended on behalf of the mayor a recent grand opening ceremony, ribbon-cutting for Modern Dentistry. Modern Dentistry is located in the Walmart Shopping Center, and met the wonderful dentist who's there, who moved, I believe, from Texas with her family here and are looking to move into the city of Sherwood. What a great facility that is. They are going to expand into a children's dentistry as they get busier and busier, and they also have the capacity to make crowns right there in two hours, so you don't have to go back and have a temporary in place for three weeks. So, really neat facility. Happy to be a part of that ceremony, and I appreciate that opportunity. Joe kind of stole my thunder about the Sherwood West Preliminary Concept Plan. I am the designated member who's been appointed for the city council to participate in that, and I'm really excited about it. We had some great candidates apply for that position, and many great candidates were not selected, not because of their experience and devotion to the city or anything like that, but we really needed a representation of where people resided and how they would be affected, and also the type of interests they had, whether they were property owners within the city limits, property owners outside the city limits, whether you had, you know, you may have lived outside of the city, but you have property in town. We wanted to get a very variety of interests. We have a young adult on the committee and some elderly people who have great knowledge and experience, so I really look forward to that, and we'll start that on Thursday. So, thank you.
Thank you. Council President?
Mr. Mayor? I forgot to mention one thing.
It's Madam Mayor, but that's okay.
Madam Mayor.
Hey, whatever.
Sit down.
Go ahead.
I forgot to mention one thing. Counselor Harris and I attended the grand opening for Menchie's on the weekend, so I don't know if you're aware of that or not, but...
We did too.
You did?
Counselor Kiper and Counselor Robinson.
Kiper and Robinson were there too.
Oh, I didn't see the other two there. But anyway, you came late, okay. Anyway, I just want to make sure I mentioned that they did open, and we had the opening ceremony. And actually, the state labor commissioner, Brad Vacian? Vacian?
Vacian.
Vacian, I can never say his name right, was there also, which was interesting. So, anyway, I just wanted to say that real quick.
Great opportunity. I'm glad that counselors were able to attend. I actually met the Menchie's, that's sort of hard to say, actually, owners at the Christmas Chamber of Commerce breakfast, and they sat right across from me. Fantastic, fantastic people. The reason that Council President Robinson attended for me, and I wasn't at the opening, is because I was in Baltimore for the city, attending the Smart Growth Conference, and it was fantastic. And so, I'm going to keep my comment short because it's midnight for me now, even though it's 9:00 o'clock here for us, because I'm still recovering from being over there, but it was an amazing conference, just landed very late on Sunday night, and when I got here, the planning department swore me. So, they are very excited to hear about what I learned, and I brought back lots of literature to talk about smart growth, because as Council Robinson, Council President Robinson said, we are at a point of growth, and we have the opportunity now to define what that growth will be, and I would love to have smart growth elements. So, I'm pleased to bring back those ideas for the city and share them and expand on them, and they even talked about community gardens, so, and dog parks, so I was happy to be there. So, I'm happy to be back, and I think that that is the end of the announcements for this evening, and so I would like to adjourn. Thank you. Council meeting adjourned.